Good morning. This is the Tuesday, December 13th, meeting of the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners. My name is Deb Shore, serving as Chair this year. To my left, fellow Commissioner Rick Vest and Commissioners Rome Amundsen and Sean Flowerday is on the far end. If you'd please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, if you'd begin the agenda, please.
The Coffee and Press Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, all relevant material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available for electronic viewing from the county clerk staff. Printing options are available upon request. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancastercounty.gov. Agenda 11 are minutes, approve of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on December 6, 2022.
I move approval.
Motion is second to approve minutes. Call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number two are claims, two As, an amendment to the payroll claims reported on December 6, 2022.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the amendment to the payroll claims. Call the roll, please.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next is approval of all claims or of the claims processed through December 13, 2022.
Move approval of the claims process through December 13, 2022.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number three is consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a commissioner or any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there's an exception, these items will be approved as one with a single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are approval of amendments to following county contracts. C-18-126, establishing the Lancaster County City of Lincoln Justice Council. C-22-469, with Attorney William Austin for legal services. C-18-193 with the Home Depot USA for maintenance, repair, operating supplies, industrial supplies and related products. C-19-223 with Advanced Auto Parts Corporate Headquarters for auto parts and accessories. C-19-87 with US Bank for purchase card services. Amendment, amendments to the following county contracts for the annual supply of asphaltic concrete. C-19-846 with Catherine &amp; Sons Construction, Inc. C-19-847 with Pavers, Inc. Rightaway contract with Cathy L Bowman, South 112th Street and A Street in a total amount of $1,298.
Is there a motion to approve the consent items?
Move approval of the consent items.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes, sir.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number four is old business. This is a resolution in matter of amendment Article 1, Section 6 of the Lincoln Lancaster County Air Pollution Control Program Regulations and Standards.
Good morning. Kerry Burksen with the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department, air quality and program supervisor.
And I did receive a call this morning, Commissioners, from Pat Lopez saying that she had intended to be here but a family situation arose that needed her attention, and I believe Scott's out ill today.
Yeah, Scott's ill as well.
So we have this.
So you get me this morning.
Yeah, which we did receive a thorough briefing on this topic individually or in groups of two from the folks who examined it carefully. And I'm at peace with what they're proposing.
I am as well.
I too.
We appreciate the opportunity to meet with you and discuss these changes.
And just so we're clear, we didn't need a motion for this.
Yes.
Okay, just so we're clear, you know, your investigation into this topic was very thorough and presented very thoughtfully, and in a short time, you helped someone who isn't familiar with these standards understand what we're doing as a county, so I appreciate that. We need experts like you dealing with this. I'll move approval of four A.
Second. In a second. The intent is to better realign the fees that support our air control advisory programs. All right. Call the roll, please.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Flowerday?
No.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries three yes, one no. Next is number five, new business, request under personnel rule 17-9, bracket B, for a one-time cash award of $500 for the following employees from county engineering. This includes Ron Bohati, Michael Clark, Brandon Kramer, Leroy Geislinger, Wayne Hergot, Roger Husenfeldt, Eric Hunt, Ed Lehman, Robert Larson, Alex Olson, and Curtis Perconi.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County engineer. And so I would like to note, and Barb is here with me, that we would like to remove Mike Clark from this list and replace him with Keith Tenelson. And then I would like, if the employees who are here today could please stand up. Ron Bohati, Keith Tenelson, Brandon Kramer, Leroy Geislinger, Wayne Hergot, Roger Husenfeldt, Eric Hunt, Ed Lawman, Robert Larson, Alex Olson, and Curtis Perconi. On Sunday afternoon during the fire, I confessively was getting ready to do a renovation project with my son when my pulse point went off, and it was quite frankly, the worst nightmare for all of us with the winds and what we knew was an extremely low relative humidity. Within a short period of time before I could start calling people and alerting them that we had a problem, I started getting the phone calls from Alex Olson, from Ron Bohati, from Bud Geislinger about the concerns in the area and what we needed to do. I think it's important to note that in an emergency, it's the managers that gear up first. And it's also important to note that we have worked as a team over the last nine years to continuously improve our responses to emergencies. We've talked about floods, we've been in floods. We've talked about fires early on last year. We really hoped that wouldn't be the case. One of the reasons why we went out early last year and began pulling shoulders along the edges of gravel roads to clear that vegetation and to get a little more solid on the edge of those roads was in case we had a fire. We knew this was coming for us, we hoped it wasn't, but we wanted to be prepared for it if it was. What I would like to say today is, that day, I could never have been more proud of our employees who, on a Sunday afternoon, before I could call them, they called me, and they stepped up to serve the citizens of Lancaster County, whether that was jumping in a disc, a private disc, to hit that fire's edge, or finding the tanker, which was in a different location than the semi, incidentally, and finding a source of water so that we could get out there and that we could be the water supply for the volunteer fire departments. That is what we did on that day, as well as barricading and just constantly staying aware of our situation. And so these managers are dedicated to the citizens of Lancaster County, and I am dedicated to them. And that's why I come forward recommending this $500 one-time bonus for them for their service on that day, and the many days that followed, because it did take an extreme amount of time to clear the rightway of the fire debris and other items.
Barb, do you have any comment?
Barb McIntyre, Human Resources, 575 South 10th Street. And I just support this. I think this is a great example of above and beyond exceptional service. So my office did approve these already to bring them forward to county board for your consideration.
Rome?
Well, Pam, I really wanted to thank you for bringing these people forward. They certainly did provide extraordinary service. And so thank you for your recognition of them. I did want to mention, though, that, and gentlemen, thank you so much for your service. We really appreciate that. I did want to mention, though, that the public recognition of all of you does not in any way minimize or detract from the many, many, many volunteer firemen, the farmers, the people from the Sheriff's Department, the Health Department.
Fire Department.
Emergency management, the poor dispatcher who was trying to get information out, and so many of the people who then notified many of the citizens that they had to leave. So we really do appreciate the combined service, the combined community service of everyone who participated in that. And I just really wanted to make this public announcement that while we will, while we do understand that this comes out of the engineer's personnel budget, the $5,500, we do appreciate the fact that you are receiving that and that, thank you for your service. And we do hope that the fireman who is injured, who is still receiving skin grafts, that he, his improvement is rapid. So I would move that we do approve this one-time award of $500 per person to these individual men.
I'll second. Thank you for being there when your community needed you.
Right. I think, gentlemen, we do deeply appreciate your quick response and your diligent efforts in being a part of the big team that addressed this issue. Thank you all, and we're honored to support you in this manner this morning.
Well said. Call the roll, please.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you.
5B is a recommendation from the Purdson agent and county engineer to award a bid to VoteScape, Inc. for culvert maintenance 2023, and it has made a cost of $662,454.25.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County engineer. So this is phase one of our culvert program for next year. I have placed on the overhead a graphic showing the pipes, what locations these pipes are in. Would like to note that VoteScapes has not done work for us before on this magnitude. However, we did check their references, and they do have similar work in similar counties that did check on the references. And so we will be closely coordinating with them on this contract and are hopeful that we can find another couple of pipe contractors to help us out with our many pipe contracts we intend on having this year.
Move approval.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. C is a resolution in matter of approval of official bonds of elected Lancaster County officers and the county surveyor. Elected officials are Kristy Edgar, public defender, Patrick Condon, county attorney, Rachel Garver, treasurer, Daniel Nolte, assessor, Troy Hawke, clerk of the district court, Matt Hanson, county clerk, Pam Dingman, county engineer, and Terry Wagner, county sheriff. The county surveyor is John Berry.
I would just say congratulations to all these individuals. Other than John, the voters have put you in office for, well, okay, that probably didn't come up. But the voters did elect John, but the other individuals here, the voters have chosen to have you do the county's work on their behalf, and so congratulations to them and for John for hopefully four more years, and I would move approval.
I'll second. We like John, too.
Yeah, John, thank you for being here, John.
All right. Call the roll, please.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. D is a resolution in matter of annual salary increases for appointed directors, assistant directors, bailiffs, and the child support referee. All salary increases are effective December 15, 2022.
Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
All right. Motion is second. Thank these dedicated county employees for their work every day. Call the roll, please.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. E is a resolution in matter of designated banks as depositories for Lancaster County for 2023.
Move approval.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes, sir.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. F is a declaration in matter of terminating declaration number D-22-0001.
Second.
Terminate the emergency declaration for the grass fires that was initiated on October 23rd. Call the roll, please.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. 5G is an interlocal agreement with Regional Behavioral Health Authority for Region 5 Systems to contract with a service provider to provide a crisis stabilization and mental health respite services to the community and to the county to utilize up to $2,300,000 in ARPA rescue plan funds to pay for costs of real property and improvements and furnishings for the purpose of creating space for the provision of these services.
Good morning. Kim Ethererton, Director, Lancaster County Community Corrections. This is the project, the Crisis Stabilization Mental Health Respite Project we've been working on with Region 5. This is our interlocal agreement, which kind of defines the roles of both parties and gives us kind of guidance on moving forward with the RFP that Region 5 will put forward.
Talk for a minute, Kim, about the population we're targeting here and the outcomes we're pursuing with this investment.
So I have been, this gap in our behavioral health system has been there for 30 years, 30-plus years. When the Crisis Center was established back in the late 80s, the goal of that was to give law enforcement a place to place individuals who are mentally having mental health issues, who are also dangerous to themselves or someone else. What's missing is that crisis placement for those individuals who don't meet that statutory dangerousness level. So imminent dangerousness is difficult to, that's difficult to meet that criteria. So what's happening oftentimes is law enforcement feels like, believes that in order to keep either this person safe or get them into a space and away from the community for a while, they lodge them in our local jail. And this, this program, this center, this Crisis Stabilization Center, is going to allow law enforcement another alternative, a place to hand off an individual for crisis stabilization, a little bit of respite from whatever that current situation is that's going on in their life, with the goal of allowing law enforcement to literally hand them off and walk out the door. The staff in this facility will be the people who facilitate any kind of discharge planning, placement in the community, making certain that there is a warm handoff from that facility to wherever that next person goes, just kind of filling that gap in the system that has been needed for such a long period of time. The other piece of this that will be useful is allowing the Crisis Center to also transfer folks from the Crisis Center into this placement if, for instance, they're waiting for an inpatient treatment bed, substance use treatment bed, or maybe they're on a waiting list for the Lincoln Regional Center. This might be another alternative for that placement. So it's filling a much-needed gap in our, in our behavioral health system in this community.
I just want to thank you for your faithfulness and shining a light on this population. We've discussed it at length in different settings and different meetings, but people that are just not getting enough care to get stabilized, it creates a burden on our law enforcement officers, on our court system, on our jail population. With the right partner, this can be a big, big asset to our community, to all those groups. So, Kim, thank you for your persistence. I'm just honored to move approval of this expenditure.
And I actually would second that, and I just really want to say that this is one of the things in, you know, Lancaster County, with your leadership, we have really moved forward in the management and the health, helpfulness towards this population. Kim, you've been very invaluable. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a really exciting program. I'm really, really happy to see it moving forward. Thanks for all your work on this.
Absolutely.
I know it was a heavy lift.
Yeah, it's very exciting. It's one of those things that you wonder if it will ever happen, and it is.
Thanks to you. Call the roll, please.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next is a grant award notification from the resident Department of Education awarding the Youth Services Center $5,373.06 from the US Department of Agriculture's Round 2 Supply Chain Assistance Funds.
Stephen, do you want to tell us anything about the Department of Agriculture's Round 2 Supply Chain Assistance Fund program?
I wasn't aware of it.
Oh, okay.
I was here because it was on the agenda.
Describe it, please.
I'm not aware of it.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
All right, well, is there a motion, then?
I would move approval.
Yeah, second.
All right. Call the roll, please.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Flowerday?
I'm going to abstain because my wife is the USDA RD director, and I want to make sure these sons don't come out of that pot before, so I'm going to abstain.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries three yes, one abstention. I is a grant contract with the Indian Center, Inc. for aid to nonprofits with Lancaster County ARPA funds in amount of $250,000.
Good morning. Michaela Johnson, Grant Coordinator. This is ARPA dollars going to the Indian Center to do improvements of the building. They're going to be doing some window repair, doors, some concrete, electrical, all of that to help the building come back and get improved a bit.
It is in need of some renovations, so.
Thank goodness for the ARPA funds.
Move approval.
Thanks.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. J is designations of official Lancaster County newspapers for 2023 publications of transportation projects as follows: The Lincoln Journal-Star, The News at Waverly, The Voice News of Hickman, The Crete News, and the Seward County Independent.
Move approval.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
I am so grateful that we have so many newspapers that we can designate with. I vote yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next is number six, public comment. Those wishing to speak on topics relating to county business, none of them generally do so at this time.
Is there anyone wishing to make public comment? Good morning. I ask that you sign in and state your name for the record, please.
Okay, thank you.
You'll have five minutes, and Leslie will remind you when you have one minute remaining.
Okay. Okay, my name is Peggy Sismanek, and thank you for letting me speak today. In trying to decide what I was going to say to you today, I thought about what I want to say to everyone that I meet that I'm not sure if they're awake to what's going on in the world today. I've heard many presentations on the 2020 and now the 2022 elections. I've listened to many people, including Dr. Douglas Frank, Seth Keschels, Colonel Sean Smith, Larry Ortega, and others. They're from all over the United States, and I've seen some information being presented to each of you regarding the elections, and my And my question, I guess, is, are you listening? And do you believe that there were problems or could have been problems in the 2020 or the 2022 elections, or any elections for that matter? My prayer for you is that God would give you ears to hear and eyes to see, and that the Holy Spirit would be upon you and help you to be able to see outside of the box. Clear back in March, a person named Archbishop Gano stated something that I believe is relevant today, and I quote, "I wish to greet you and encourage you in this reawaking, reawakening of consciousness. The slumber in America and all people has lasted for far too long. It is now the moment to open our eyes, to wake up, and to understand what has happened and what is happening. It is the moment to act." This time period that we are living through is being called the Great Awakening. It's a period of, I believe, dispelling or questioning at least the false narratives all around us and shining light on truth. We've been slaves to a system that chooses to keep us in the dark. My journey through the darkness, I guess you would call it, began during the Trump presidency and especially after the 2020 election. I began to question the narrative. Like, how could someone who stayed in his basement the whole time without really ever getting a crowd together get more votes than any president in history? Also, there were all these people that came forward, mainly from swing states, but people that saw ballots in ditches, ballots being moved across state lines, ballots that were being written on, in multiples in parking lots. And also Dr. Shiva explaining an algorithm, this was in Massachusetts, I believe, as to why he believed he lost his election. And so I began to question. Well, then I heard about the Nebraska Voter Accuracy Project, and I decided to become involved with that. I started helping to canvas in Lincoln, Nebraska, and I quickly found out about all the problems that we have on our voter rolls and that they are in serious need of revision and updating. Then I heard Dr. Frank speak and explain the algorithms, and I don't have time this morning to tell you about all of that, but it opened my eyes to, oh my gosh, there was fraud in the elections in Nebraska, which until that point, I guess, I really hadn't maybe believed in. And he pointed out that this took place in every county in Nebraska. Well, then, just recently, I heard General Flynn, this was just last week. General Michael Flynn stated, and I quote, "If there were problems or if there was election fraud, wouldn't you..."
One minute.
Excuse me, that wasn't, General Michael Flynn, and I quote, "People in counties have the responsibility for our election systems. So if you accept money from the state or you accept, accept money from the federal government for machines, like, for instance, if they want to put a machine in your election down at your county X, which would be Lancaster, take that, and then guess what? They own you." End of quote. Well, I don't know what happened for sure in the state of Nebraska. All I know is that Bob Ebnen won't hear about anything. He won't look into it. He seems to think that we were perfectly, had a fine, clear election. But look what's going on in the whole world. There's been protests in Italy, protests in Myanmar, protests right now going on in, in Brazil, all having to do with elections. And we're to think that we're the only place that didn't have them? In closing, I want to say to you, what part of history are you going to be on? Part of the problem or part of the solution? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to make public comment? Good morning.
Good morning. I have a few comments on election integrity. In late September, a RASM News and Survey found that 84% of likely voters were concerned about election integrity in this year's congressional elections. This view was shared by liberals and Democrats and conservatives and Republicans. Voters thought that making sure that there is no cheating in elections was more important than making it easier for everyone to vote, and the margin was 62% to 36%. Surveys show that most likely voters think that mail-in voting makes cheating easier. Our elections are now much less secure than elsewhere in the world. The 2005 report of the Commission on Federal Election Reform concluded that absentee ballots remain the largest source of potential voter fraud. This commission was chaired by former President Jimmy Carter and former Secretary of State James Baker. Former Democratic Senate Majority Leader Tom Daschle was another prominent Democrat on the commission. France banned absentee ballots in 1975 after massie vote, voter fraud was discovered. One of my biggest concerns is the lack of signature verification, both at the polls and for mail-ins. There's no verification at the polls, and based on affidavits, and from what I've been told, the signature verification is lax for mail-ins. I'm also concerned about the inaccuracies of the voter registration rolls. From the canvassing that we did, there were many people who did not live at the addresses listed on the registration. I know of one person in my neighborhood who has not lived in Nebraska for 20 years, but he's still a registered voter. There's a lot, I think, that we can do to improve election confidence. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Is there anyone else wishing to make public comment?
Next is announcements.
Mr. Clerk, if you'd just wait one moment, please. Good morning.
I'd just talk to you today about my water bill and, amen.
If you'd like to step in front of the mic, thank you.
Let me sign in. None of my signatures are the same, by the way. You set my ballot on right end.
You could state your name for the record, please.
I came to check on my water bill today. I have a $3 usage fee. I spent, you know, $3 for gas bill, $40 for fees. They're not taxable on, they're not taxing properly, I don't think, on the usage if I'm have to pay it. It's like $24, it's not taxable. There's no tax on it, but yet the wastewater is taxable. I can't figure that out.
Okay. Here at Lancaster County, we do not oversee the Lincoln City water system or billing. So we will, Corey, would you be willing to point him in the right direction? We've got our deputy clerk in the back of the room, and she would be happy to show you to the correct office so you can talk with them. This would be a city of Lincoln issue, not Lancaster County.
Okay, you, you're not Lancaster County, you're just city?
We are Lan, this is the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners, and you are talking about a Lincoln City water issue.
Yes, but it's still on Lincoln, in Lancaster County.
And your, your.
And technically, I mean.
Comments, sir, I just would add what, comments are acceptable, we're not.
Okay.
We're not allowed to interact. Commissioner Shore is helping you. If you want to go to a city office and talk to them about this issue.
Yes. Also, I, I'd like to state that four years ago, the 11th of December, a friend of mine went to prison over an accident that happened with a bicyclist. He's since 15 years. And a bicyclist's wife said that this gentleman was an alcoholic, which he wasn't, had previously had tickets, several DUIs, which he didn't. And it was like 150 people came that day that he was sentenced on the 11th of December in 2017. So there was, you know, the autopsy didn't come back for like three weeks on a bicyclist who had cannabis in his system. My friend was slapping himself in the face. He's a Vietnam vet, he's seen death before, but when you have somebody hit the right side of your windshield and decapitate the back of your head, and they want to know if he's dead, well, I mean, he's in, he's like in shock, not really shocked, but like mentally, I mean, I don't know what, what, how to explain it. I call it the inverted anal syndrome. That's what people don't understand, but that's when you're so afraid that you're, you're, inverse into your intestines. And he couldn't walk a white line. He was having trouble talking, and they didn't smell beer until the one officer got in the car. And there was like cones in the back of the car. But, you know, this biker was like a racer and was fearless, his daughter said, and she testified, and accused him of being a murderer. And he's carrying that with him today, and he's been in pantry out here for, for four years.
Sir.
And if there's cannabis in the system, the only way they can see is they have somebody that can see him and see how intoxicated they are.
Sir, you pause for a minute, but as Commissioner Vest said, this really isn't a time for the board to interact with you. Also, this is public comment, this is a time to speak on items relating to county business. And it does sound like your comments are not quite related to county board business, and, and I.
How does the county court then proceed like for?
It's, it's a conversation that we can have after, after this, but, but at this, at this point, I would, I would just ask that, you know, you talk to me afterwards.
The district attorney told me, I want to talk to him and with all the information, and he told me.
Okay. Let's, let's, let's continue this after the, after the public comment. All right, thank you.
All right. Okay. Is there anyone else wishing to make public comment?
Please.
All right. Seeing no one, Mr. Clerk, if you'd continue with the announcements.
The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting immediately following the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting on Tuesday, December 13, 2022, in Room 112 of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will not hold a staff meeting on Thursday, December 15, 2022, due to attending the Nebraska Association of County Officials' Annual Conference in Kearney, Nebraska. The following meetings will be held on Tuesday, December 20, 2022, in Room 112 of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a special staff meeting at 8:30 a.m. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting at 9 a.m. with the Board of Equalization immediately following. County Commissioners, cymbridia at 402-441-7447, or commish@lancaster.inny.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners' meeting is broadcast live on Link TV. Link TV is available on ALO Channel 2 and Spectrum Channel 1300. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln.inny.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on YouTube and Facebook. Link TV apps are also available on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV.
That move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second to adjourn. Call the roll, please.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
We are adjourned.